The Park City City Council on April 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herr, George Glover, Ben Salsetta, Melvin Kerr, Tom Jones, George Capps, Brandy Bailey, Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the email request is here to lead us in the invocation and Councilmember Melvin Kerr is going to lead us in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
It's an honor to be here again. I left here six years ago, left work here, and it's good to know that you guys keep showing up for work. Thank you. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for another good day. We thank you for another opportunity to work in behalf of the people. And, Lord, we just ask that you give wisdom and understanding and discernment as decisions are made this evening and that there would be good decorum. Lord, we thank you for our public servants, wherever they are, Lord, around the world and even to this room. We just thank you that we are, we live in safety, but we have a great challenge to provide safety for all folks in the community and across the country. We thank you and we just praise your name in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Jim?
Can I second that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Tonight, we're going to start with, under awards and presentations, swearing in Shawn Fox, our new city administrator. Shawn?
I do so solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do so solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties of city administrator. So help me God.
Better slow that down, sir.
And faithfully, to the best of my abilities, discharge the duties of city administrator.
Discharge the duties of city administrator.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you very much.
Could I get a picture, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you and welcome.
All right, our next item's public forum and we don't have anybody signed up for public forum this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with our new city administrator. Shawn?
Yes, sir, I was just telling Dee, I have a couple other oaths in my mind, so that's why it's a little bit different. But Mayor, Council, good evening. Well, it's definitely been a busy week getting to know the employees and learning about both the successes and the challenges facing the community. On the business end of things, besides the various staff members, I've met with Kurt Miller this week to discuss the ongoing projects and city design standards. Sarah and Garth from Gilmore and Bell, met with them to discuss our IRBs and our general obligation bonds. Lou Rebelli, to discuss Camper World and the maintenance, new maintenance building. And I also met with a data specialist this morning regarding the Census Bureau. Also this morning, I met with Kristen Zimmerman from WAMPO to go over the transportation improvement program and two of the projects that we currently have ongoing. Now, I've been told that council previously had concerns about the possibilities that cities in the future may have to fund these type projects fully on their own nickel and then get reimbursed from KDOT at a later point in time upwards of six years. According to Kristen, that notion or that proposal has been put on hold for at least the next two or three years, so that's good news. On the personal side, I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to the council and to the city for being given the opportunity to be your new city administrator. Park City has a bright future in both my wife, Tracy, and I. We are excited about moving into our new home in Bear Hills Estates and are looking forward to being a part of this community. I do know I have big shoes to fill following Jack. Our skills and qualifications are a little bit different, but what I can guarantee you, and I give my commitment on this, is I'll do everything I can to do my level best to make certain that Park City gets the very best from me, as well as the staff going forward. So, thank you very much.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Shawn? Not seeing any. Thank you, Shawn. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Tom?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to new business item A, which is consider the purchase of mobile computers and computer accessories for the police department vehicles. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this evening I have a couple of requests for equipment to purchase. The first is for in-vehicle computers. Computers, as you know, in our cars are very essential pieces of equipment. They not only write reports on those computers, but most importantly, that's what they use to communicate back and forth with 911 dispatch. Particularly, they receive the details of the calls that we receive. They may dispatch a very short thing on the radio, but then all this other information comes across on the computer. We bought new computers for the cars approximately five years ago, and that's been a good purchase, I think. We're starting to experience some problems with them now. What I would like to do is avoid having to purchase all of them at once like we did last time where it's such a large amount of money and a big expenditure. We're buying two new vehicles this year. They're on order right now and should be in supposedly this month, we hope. What I would like to do is get two new computers for them. It's a lot easier to install them when the vehicle's new and we have all the other equipment put in at the same time. To do it afterwards is just, is more difficult. We've done a lot of research on different types of computers, the kind of the way of what the future seems to be, the tablet. The laptops that we have now, they're put in the car with a dock, so the officers are able to remove the laptops, and that's been a very useful feature. The officers regularly carry the laptops back and forth to their cars, which is very helpful to them because they're able to work on the same computer throughout the day if they choose to do that, start a report and then continue it on the same computer in the office and so forth. We did some extensive research on different types of computers that were available along with Ted Wallander, our IT manager, and we're looking at the same brand of computer that we currently have, which is GTAC. When you get into the type of computers that are rugged or semi-rugged, the price escalates, and that's always the nature of things, unfortunately. But we do need to have rugged or semi-rugged equipment in the cars, otherwise they just don't survive. We've, in the past, had standard laptop computers and they just, they basically fall apart. They shake apart. There is money available in our capital equipment fund, I'm sorry, in the special drug and alcohol program fund, and I'll let Doug address the funding of that whenever we get to that point. But if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Not seeing any, chief.
Mayor and council, some of you might recall that, I think it's been two years plus, we adopted a charter ordinance which chartered out from a provision of state law which was pretty restrictive about how the city could spend special drug and alcohol funds. You had to spend it for education. There was an element of enforcement in there, but it was pretty narrowly drawn. That statute was one that was non-uniform and so one that we could charter out from, and the chief had brought to my attention these two or three years ago that the city of Lawrence had expanded the definition of enforcement to satisfy the requirements of what could be, what money is the fund could spend on equipment. And so what we did is we adopted a, the charter ordinance in it, and it reads that whatever you determine complies with the provisions of our charter ordinance is deemed to be satisfactory under our charter ordinance to spend money on materials for the police department and enforcement generally. So, that last sentence, that's the purpose of that in the suggested motion. If you would, when you make the motion, besides approving the purchase, make that finding that you determine that this expenditure complies with the provisions of Section 2D of our charter ordinance.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Doug? Everybody kind of remembers that that fund tends to kind of grow and the way we had our hands tied through the state, it made it very difficult for us to spend funds, so this just gives us another vantage point where we can use some of those dollars. Melvin?
Is this that Fund 22 that's split, or is this a different fund? That's split between the Parks Department and the Police Department?
Yes, there is a part that goes to Parks.
So is that split three ways there, then the Parks can get a third of it or whatever?
I believe that's three ways that that goes, Dee. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I don't recall. I know the typical statute was, I'm not sure about our revised one.
We didn't revise anything about the distribution of the funds. We only revised the definition of what was, what the police department could spend the money for on their share of the funds. So this didn't change anything as far as the funds that go to the park.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, does the council have a recommendation? Jim?
Okay, I would move that we approve the appropriation of $9,545.68 from the city's special alcohol and drug program fund for the purchase of two in-vehicle computers, vehicle computer docks, keyboards, power supplies, and extended warranties for installation in police department vehicles, and office docks for in-office use of such computers, and determine that such expenditures complies with the provisions of Section 2D of Charter Ordinance C-33-2014.
Okay, and Brandy?
A second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item B, which is consider the purchase of mobile radios for the installation in two police department vehicles. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, the police department, again, were purchasing two vehicles. We have been, and I'm requesting radio equipment for those two vehicles. Again, it's much easier to install them when we put in all the other equipment. Just a little quick background on the radios. It's been back around 2009, the last time we purchased radios. We kind of, I wasn't here at that time, but as I was told, we were kind of informed or discovered at the last minute, basically, that these radios were no longer going to be supported and we had to go buy all new radios at once, which was well in excess of $100,000. I definitely wouldn't want to come in and ask for $100,000 that wasn't budgeted, but I've been setting aside money each year in the capital equipment fund with that in mind that we were going to have to replace these because these radios, Motorola has quit supporting them and we were warned by that, by the radio shop in Sedgewood County. So they no longer repair them or make parts for them. So they've given us that heads up that that was coming up. So the money has been set aside in capital equipment fund. We really only have one. We do have another choice as far as radio brand. If we, if we did that, we would be like one of only one or two departments in the county that used that brand, and I think they've regretted it and I think they're going to Motorola. So, our local dealer gave me the quote, which is attached in your packet. There's really no other option there as far as price. They allow us to write on the Johnson County contract, which brings the price down 40% below retail. That's the lowest price that's available to us right now. So I would ask for your approval for the amount of $9,545, I'm sorry, $6,849.60.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the chief or is there a recommendation from the council? George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve appropriation of $6,849.60 from the city's capital equipment fund for the purchase of two in-vehicle radios and accessories for such radios.
And Jim?
Can I second that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Thanks, chief.
Mayor?
That brings us to item C, which is consider a resolution authorizing the conveyance of properties to Keist Industries. Dee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a routine property transfer. In 1996, Keist Industries had an IRB. It has matured, and in 2005, they conveyed property, because the property is conveyed to the city at that time. In 2015, the property was intended to be conveyed back to Keist Industries, but they didn't get all pieces of it. Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell realized that and has asked us to go ahead and convey this last piece back to Keist.
So this is just a small piece of housekeeping for us. Tom?
I would make a motion or move that we approve the resolution, and I don't have a number.
1026-2019.
Okay, have the government body of Park City, Kansas, authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain property to Keist Industries.
Okay, Jim?
Can I second that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Herr, George Glover, Ben Salsetta, Melvin Kerr, Tom Jones, George Capps, Brandy Bailey, Jim Schrader.
Aye. And that resolution passes 7-0. Thank you, Dee. That brings us to item D, which is considering engineering contracts with Baughman Company PA for paving improvements for Echo Hills Commercial Second Edition. Shawn?
Yes, sir. Trying to play a little bit of catch-up over here. Over the week, I also met with Brett Wooton from Baughman. Is that how you pronounce it, Baughman? Engineering? He has reported out that basically, as far as Mike Loveland and the phase development Echo Hills over there with Atwood and everything along that line, that so far, the water lines and the sewer lines are complete, and now it's ready to proceed forward with the paving. Originally, council had approved that back some time ago, but then it was omitted, yet we were pending a letter of credit from the developer for 35%. We have since received the letter of credit, and so we're looking and requesting council approve the engineering contract so they can proceed forward with the paving that will be supporting Atwood's.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Shawn? Is there a recommendation from the council? Jim?
I would move to approve the engineering contract with Baughman Company PA for pavement, for paving improvements to serve lots 1 and 2, Block A, and Lot 1, Block B, Echo Hills Commercial Second Edition.
And Brandy?
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item D, which is discussion of the historian and possible compensation and funding stores. George brought this up last meeting, so George, I don't know if you got any type of recommendations on how we start this process, but...
Well, in the past, the last two historians have been employees, and I, I don't have any thoughts on it. I just think it's important that we move ahead and, and record those, our history. I think we've came a long ways, and I think it would be nice to see where we were when we were in improvement district and where we are now. It's quite a, quite a difference, and I would sure love to see a historian in there.
I think one thing we ought to, we ought to consider here or start thinking about, I think when we look at our staff, who is, who may have maintained it in the past, there's too many hats being worn, and, and we need to probably outsource this.
I can tell you, Mayor, when I worked there, I wore three hats, and I, I agree with you because I burn out, and you can burn an employee out by putting too many hats on them.
I think it might be a good idea to maybe even put a group together that wants to, to look at this and put together maybe some type of a compensation package or how we would do that. Maybe it's to the salary of a council member to try to get or recruit upon somebody to be in or serve in that historian piece.
Well, Mayor, there's some things we miss. I know like George, he handles the fishing derby, and they talk about how many years they've been doing that fishing derby. Well, actually, they've been doing it a lot longer than that. They used to come in and, and put fish in Chisholm Creek, and they would have the fishing derby in Chisholm Creek. They haven't done that for years, but there's nothing, just some of us old timers is the only one who remember that. And I think it's some of the things that, stuff like that interests them.
And you know, there may potentially be somebody in the community that has a desire or interest in this, that would like to do this, but I think we need to put together some type of description of what we're looking for and what that might include and possibly put that out as, in a hiring-type format and try to see what level of interest there is to get somebody on board and bring them in and have them start going through the basement where we have a bunch of stuff stored that really has been neglected, and get somebody working on that. And there may be somebody that's been with the community or around a long time that this would just be a thing that would highly interest them.
Well, I've probably, in places, I've probably got some pictures, you know, the, what we call Old Town in Horseshoe now. I've got pictures of that back in the 60s, and you know, you look at it and say, well, I don't recognize that because there were no trees there. It was all brand-new and, and you know, stuff has changed, but I've got a lot of pictures of the old stuff.
Yeah, I know one thing I think everybody remembers, when we were in the process of construction, one of my desires has been to always have some old black and white photos to use for artwork in our lobby. And I would love to see where we got to a point where we could find some photographs and have them blown up or developed and have them hung out in the lobby with, you know, some placard below that kind of describes this. You know, it'd be neat to see the first patrol car that the city ever had and, you know, just some different things like that. Different council pictures. Maybe we can come across something from the first governing body and, and get something like that and put in here, and I think those would be great pieces to have within the city hall.
Well, history interests me. You know, we talk about all the stuff we do now. I remember in the early years in the police department, we changed our own oil. We changed our own oil out in front of the old police station. You know, there was, there was times we did stuff like that, but that's history, but it's not recorded.
So would anybody be interested, maybe three council members get together, serving on a committee and kind of work through on what we could put together and throw out there?
I would.
Tom would? Okay, anybody else?
I think George would. He's certainly right up his alley.
I'd be happy to.
Okay?
I wouldn't mind.
All right, I hear three people have stepped to the plate. Somebody want to make a motion? Jim?
That's great, guys. I appreciate that. I, I would appreciate it. So I nominate Melvin, Tom, and George to, to, I guess, what's the wording? Lead this subcommittee?
Can we also throw Dana in there? I think she'd be a good help.
Yeah, yeah. I would, I would add Dana to that as well.
Okay.
Well, we do need someone to make sure we keep minutes.
Exactly. Brandy?
A second.
All right, so we got a motion and a second. Dee, do you have that?
I believe I do, yes.
All right. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. We had such a long agenda this evening. So we'll go ahead and start with closing, closing comments by the council. Jim?
I would just like to welcome Mr. Fox to the, to the team. I'm excited you're here and welcome to the neighborhood and the city and, and excited what we get to work on in the future.
Brandy?
I echo Jim's words. I'm excited that you're here and I'm looking forward to how we move along. Also, Sewing and embroidery shop, I was in there today, and they have the flag branding merchandise in there. They did just get a new shipment of flags. They're actually really nice flags. The color really pops on them, so she's ready to start selling those. And also, the Fourth of July Committee is getting into full gear, looking for, getting ready for the Fourth of July. We meet the second Monday of each month at Best Western at 6:00 here in Park City. We're working on ideas for the Fourth of July pageant, our medallion hunt, and then events that are going to be happening the day of the Fourth in the, in the park. So if you have any ideas or any interest, reach out to someone on the committee. That would be myself or Steve Brown in the community.
Okay, George?
Well, I would echo welcome to Shawn. And you know, going back about history, well, history fascinates me, and I know today, today in history, we lost the last surviving member of Jimmy Doolittle's raid on Tokyo, Colonel Cole, I believe is his name. He was General Doolittle's co-pilot, but he passed away today at the age of 103. So our, what they call our greatest generation is very slowly fading into history. And I would also like to say that, that I really think it's great that, that military promoted our own Senator Bob Dole to Colonel. I think that was a great gesture on their part. He said he didn't know if he deserved it, but he would take it. But I think it's great. That's all I have.
Tom?
I'd like to welcome our new city administrator, too. Saturday, there's a SCAC meeting. It's in Valley Center. Sedgewood County Association of Cities starts at 8:30 if anybody's interested in going. The county manager is the speaker this month, so it'd be Mr. Stoltz. Be interesting discussion. All I got.
Awesome. Melvin?
I just wanted to welcome Shawn aboard and anything we can do for you, so that's all I have.
Ben?
Good to have you here with us in Park City. Welcome. Couple things here. One, this Saturday, we'll have the convos over coffee, 9:30 here in town, so come on out. Love to have you out there for that conversation. It's always great to have people stopping by and chatting for a little while. Secondly, just wanted, this is more of a personal note here, encourage people. This week, I went and got my lab work done. I know you all are excited about hearing that. I am healthy, so that's good, but the reason I do it, I do it every year, and you don't know what type of medical issues will creep up quickly, and so I want to encourage people to go out, make sure you stay on top of those little things like that because our health can change, and so get out there, do what you need to, take care of yourself, be healthy, exercise, all those things because it'll keep you in shape and going for a little longer.
George?
Yeah, I also want to welcome Shawn. Welcome to Park City. We're, we're looking forward to mighty things in the future, so we're glad you're part of the team here. Also, my, one of my neighbors had told me on Grove, it used to be nothing but a hayfield right where the fishing pond is. Twenty, 30 years ago, they said, and there was a row of trees along the road, and I guess there was a one-way street. So we've come a long way since then. Also want to remind everybody about our fishing derby coming up. A lot of folks fishing this past weekend. We had over 20 people fishing. They had stocked the pond. Everyone was catching fish, so I encourage you, families, come on out and fish the pond. The rocks look really nice around it now. We're glad for that, but that's June 15th from 9 to 11 at Chisholm Point Pond, so we're excited about that. Look forward to updates on Facebook and also Channel 7. Thank you.
Tom?
Since John's not here, I'll make a motion adjourn.
And Melvin?
I'll second that.
I'll second that. Just one, one thing I just want to come up real quick and just say, I'm so excited about the, the team that we have assembled now in the administration side, the police department side, the public works side. We have a bunch of aces, and we have some great things ahead of us, and I'm very encouraged by that, so. And I also want to make sure we point out to all the hard work Dana put in over the last few months, and Dana, thank you for everything you've done. We appreciate that.
And with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you, have a good evening.